Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this hearing on the state's 10-year highway plan. My name is Karen Leo-Hill, and I am very proud to be the executive counselor for District 2. GACIT, which is what is the formal host of tonight's meeting, is the Governor's Advisory Council on Intermodal Transportation. Every two years, the state of New Hampshire, starting with GACIT, updates the state's 10-year transportation plan. The Governor's Advisory Council on Intermodal Transportation is the five counselors and the New Hampshire Department of Transportation Commissioner. And this evening, we have Assistant Commissioner David Rodri. The process begins with meetings of the council and the Department of Transportation. That started over the summer. And then it comes to the public hearing process, where we have a draft plan. This is what the department has put together. And then we go around the state. There are 26 hearings that are taking place. And this evening, we're kicking off the home stretch here. I think Thursday is the end. So we've done 18 or so of these hearings across the state. I have three more this week, and I'm holding eight hearings throughout my district. The Department of Transportation has informed us that the 10-year plan is about $400 million oversubscribed. This means that not only can we accept no additions to the plan, we must make substantial cuts. The construction costs of the Bow Junction Concord Safety Project, of about $300 million, are proposed to be defunded entirely. So we're going to hear a presentation this evening of the proposed 10-year highway plan and the situation as it is. We're going to hear a presentation tonight from Toby Reynolds, our Director of Project Development.
Got it.
All right, I got that. And now, where did you put the other ones? I'd like to introduce our other Department of Transportation staff who are here with us as well. As I mentioned, Assistant Commissioner David Rodri, Director Toby Reynolds, Project Manager Glenn Davison, Denise Sherburne, and I should say, there's a whole team from our Department of, our Division of Community.
Planning and Community Assistance.
Planning and Community Assistance. And so I want to thank them as well. Denise Sherburne, Jody Sotalaro, and Derek Sirick and Amy Reardon, who are also helping us this week. Also want to introduce Chris Turgeon, the District 2 engineer. He is responsible literally for your roads right here. So Chris, where are you? All right, great. Thank you for being here. And then also Loretta Doughty, our Program Administrators, also here. Thank you to all of our DOT staff for being here and looking forward to this final push here in this last week. So part of our state infrastructure is contained within the state's turnpike system. Those highway projects are paid for with tolls. And Toby's going to talk about that a little bit more. Because tolls have not increased since 2007, the funds generated for the turnpike system have not kept up with the cost of projects over the past nearly 20 years. So one option to allow for more of these highway projects to be funded is to increase the tolls. Our tolls are significantly lower than any of our neighboring states. And if a toll increase is paired with a resident discount, this fee increase could be borne mostly by out-of-state tourists. So this evening, since the Executive Council is responsible for starting toll increases, for proposing a toll increase, that requires the approval of the council and the governor. I'm particularly interested in hearing folks' thoughts on a potential toll increase after you hear the presentation, as well as anything else that you want to hear. You're also welcome to talk about the gas tax, which Toby will talk about as well, which pays for other, which pays for a lot of our infrastructure projects. But that is something that's dealt with by the legislature, my friends in the legislature, not by the Executive Council. So you're welcome to talk about anything that you want to. But the reason that the Executive Council is especially interested in hearing thoughts about a potential toll increase is because that's what we actually have control over. So before I turn it over to Toby, I want to, and we're going to do about, there's going to be about a 20-minute presentation from Toby Reynolds. And then we'll hear from the Regional Planning Commission, Lakes Region Planning Commission. We'll hear a five-minute presentation from them. And then we'll go to the public testimony. And they're going to give me the blue cards. And we'll open it up. Everyone will have three minutes to talk. Glenn will give some time, which we'll go over before we start. But that's what we're going to do, a presentation. And then I'll open it up for public testimony. I want to thank, in particular, my fellow elected officials who are here. State Representative Bill Bolton and State Representative Janet Lucas, as well as State Representative Jerry Stringham. If you guys could say hello. Thank you very much for being here. And yes, we can talk to them. They do hard work, good work for all of us. And then we also want to thank the town of Plymouth for hosting us. Especially, thank you very much Becky White, who is the Library Director here at the Pease Library. Thank you very much for hosting us. Wonderful, great timing. Thank you so much. And I will now turn it over to Toby. Thank you.
It's a good crowd. I thank you all for coming. Couple of things on this first slide is, there's a link to our website here, which there's also a link on your agenda that we handed out. And there's a lot of information on our website that you can check out. There's a copy of the draft book is on the website, and some maps and some other resources. Also on our website is a link to our comments portal. And so you can go there and leave a comment. You can hit the QR code tonight, leave a comment if you wanted to. If you wanted to pass it on to somebody that couldn't make it tonight, that's another way for folks to give testimony about the plan. The comments do become part of the record. So they get gathered up with all of the meeting minutes that we then hand over to the counselors to consider as we continue to work on the plan. So what we'll be covering tonight, the counselor already mentioned most of it, is draft 10-year plan strategies. Well, funding overview first. Then we'll get into the one slide on the TAP program. I'll turn it over to Glenn from Lakes Region, Regional Planning. And then we'll get right into feedback and questions. So this is a high-level overview of the schedule. It starts in the fall of 2004, or the fall of an even year is when we do this, when we start the 10-year plan, because we do it every two years. We're in the, about in the middle, about fall of 2025 to do these hearings. And then we hope to have a draft, I hope to have a final 10-year plan signed end of June, beginning of July of 2026. So high-level funding overview. And there's a copy of this slide over there in the easel. And I'll refer back to that as we go through the presentation, because the presentation follows all of the different wedges of the graphic there. This is a good overview of all of the transportation sectors that the Department of Transportation has some sort of influence over. The total budget right now in the draft plan, all added together, all 10 years, is $4.5 billion. The roads and bridges portion, which is the federal highway funding, turnpike funding and state funding, total about $3.8 billion of that 4.6, or 4.5. And then the aeronautics rail and transit portion down at the bottom there, totaled to about $68 million of the $4.5 billion budget. Okay, so moving right into the bottom three wedges there on the graphic is aeronautics rail and transit. These funding levels have remained essentially the same as the past several 10-year plans. For aeronautics, it's, they receive mostly federal funding for aeronautics. But there are, there is some local match to that federal money, local and match from the, also the airport operators. There's 15 eligible airports in New Hampshire that qualify for this funding. It's used to do runway and taxiway improvements or to remove runway obstructions or minor lighting projects is what we use that funding for. The rail program is all state-funded. We collect tenant or lease fees from the railroad operators that use the state rail lines. And we use those funds to basically maintain those lines, do bridge inspections, minor drainage improvement, rail and track repair, those kinds of things. And then the last piece of this is the transit. Like aeronautics, it's mostly federal funding that we do. But there is also some local match, or state match, excuse me, in that funding. It's used to fund a variety of programs. But probably the most notable ones would be local transit, like Conquert Area Transit or Advanced Transit. Also, regional bus services like CNJ Railways or Boston Express. And then it's also used to support local mobility, the local mobility network or transportation, volunteer transportation for seniors or folks with disabilities to get to appointments. Other things to note here with these different funding buckets is they have very defined uses for eligibility. So transferring funds between the different funding sources is generally not allowed. Okay, so moving to the bigger three pieces of the pie there. The next three slides, the next two slides will go over in general how the things that we use to shape the rest of the 10-year plan. And then I'll talk about each one of the different wedges individually. One thing that we're seeing is revenue is essentially flat. Since the pandemic, it hasn't really bounced back to the level that we have projected. Also, operating costs and project costs are going up, mostly due to escalation. And I'll talk more about that. I have a whole slide on this next bullet coming up. But we need to redirect some of the state funding that we use to pay down our debt service on a loan that the state took out to finish I-93 from Salem to Manchester. All of these things are leading to a general reduction in the number of projects that are in this version of the draft 10-year plan. So the first thing we wanted to establish is what things we want to focus on in the 10-year plan before we establish what things we needed to remove from the 10-year plan to bring it fiscally constrained. And so the first thing we wanted to do was focus on maintenance and preservation, so keeping the things that we have in service in good condition. We've seen a good gain in our pavement condition, in our bridge condition over the past several years, 10, 12 years, where we've lowered our very poor pavements down to 1% on state roads. And we've increased our good pavements up to about 56% on state roads. Also, red list bridge count has continued to go down over those 14 years. So in order to not lose the momentum, actually, let me back up. The other, the other thing we wanted to do is continue to invest in our safety programs and other assets that are on the highway, like guardrails, overhead sign structure, culverts. So we want to continue with those programs. A lot of that infrastructure is aging. And we need to get to it to either replace it or repair it. So to concentrate on the state funding, the wedge at about 4 o'clock there on the graphic, the state funding is supported mostly by the gas tax. We call it the Betterment Program. Again, we've seen that funding level be flat. It's actually gone down a little bit. It's mostly related to more fuel-efficient vehicles. So vehicles are going further on a tank of gas than they did, say, 10 or 15 years ago. The other thing that I, as I mentioned on the pre, on two slides ago, was Centerville 367 in 2014 established an additional 4.2 cent gas tax on top of, I think it was 18.5 cents or so. So the additional 4.2 cents was used to support the Tiffy loan that the state took out to finish I-93 from Salem to Manchester. We didn't, the debt service on that loan was deferred until I-93 was completed, which was essentially last year. So between 2014 and last year, the revenue that we've collected with this 4.2 cents, we've been able to invest in rural pavements and bridges. And that's one of the reasons we've seen a gain in our pavement condition, in our bridge condition. Now that $20 million that we've been using for those projects needs to be redirected to the debt service. So we don't want to lose all of our gains that we've seen. And so we're looking to redirect about $16.4 million from the bigger blue wedge on the graphic there, the federal funds, to continue to invest in these rural pavements and bridges. Not all rural roads are eligible for federal funds. But where we can, we're going to redirect some of our federal funds to continue to make gains in those programs. So that's really the, when we change to the state portion of the budget. The federal portion and the turnpike portion are of a few more wrinkles in them. So it's, it'll take me a little bit longer to get through those. For the federal program, the money that we get is, comes from the bipartisan infrastructure law. And that law expires in 2026, September of 2026. So about a year from now, that law expires. We currently receive about $235 million from that federal law. For the rest of the 10-year plan, we need to assume some level of federal funding. So out through 2036. So we're recommending that we continue to fund the 10-year plan at this level through the rest of the years of the 10-year plan. And also every two years, we go, we go through an inflation exercise to, we look at a rolling average of rolling 10-year average of construction projects. And we make a recommendation on what the inflation should be for projects that are in the outer years of the plan. Currently, it's at 3.7%. We're recommending that we increase that to 4.4%. That adds about $93 million to this plan. The indirect cost rate is a, it's a rate we can collect from federal highway to help deliver the program. So this pays for like a lot of the support services that the department has. It's to support all the projects in the plan. So this would be like our financial group, our audit group, right-of-way, environment. Though, we've seen those costs go up some. So we're proposing to increase that from 10% to 12%. So we increase it by 2%, adds about $47 million to the plan. We've had 22 projects that we planned to have under construction or completed before we started this draft plan. But they've been delayed for a variety of reasons. So we've needed to move 22 projects from the current plan into this draft plan. That's added $130 million to this plan. And then overall, we've just seen project costs increase. So projects that we're working on actively in design, as we bid other projects and we apply those prices to projects we're working on, we've seen the project costs increase more at a higher rate than the inflation could account for. So all of this is leading to about, as the counselor mentioned, about a $400 million.
Can I just ask you a question? So the 22 projects that are removed from the prior plan to the current plan or the future plan, adds $130 million. Is that due to inflation? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure, I can give you, I think what you're asking for is that, for the federal program, when you, whatever year that you need to use the money in is the next year you need to take the money from. So we have a project that was planned to advertise for construction, let's say, in 2024. Then there was funds in 2024 that were planned for that project. And that project gets delayed to, say, 2027.
I get it.
Then now we have to use 2027 funding. So the 2024 funding had to be used by some other project in that year. So to continue to fund those projects that we move forward, we need to take money from now this draft plan that we didn't plan on. Welcome. And I can explain more after.
But again, you're still, you're probably allocating for some of, or you're incrementing for inflation.
Yes, as part of the future project. Yes, okay. So all of this is leading to that $400 million of overprogramming. Next couple of slides, I'll talk about what our plan is to bring that down. So again, we wanted to focus on maintenance and preservation on our federal program. And we also have programs as part of the, our federal apportionment that are mandated. So there's, like the Transportation Alternative Program I'll talk about later. There's the Highway Safety Improvement Program, the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Program. Those have very specific uses. You can't just apply those funds to any project. And so we've needed to maintain those programs, plus our maintenance and preservation programs. And that accounts for about $1.36 billion in the plan. We also, to continue our momentum on driving down red list bridges and keeping our bridges in good condition, all the bridge projects that we're in, that are in the current 10-year plan, we're proposing to continue to work on and keep in the draft 10-year plan. Individual LPA projects. So if we have a, these are projects, local public agency projects. These are projects that we partner with the locals on. We, the state has an investment in it. The locals have an investment in it. And we want to keep those projects moving forward as well. And so those are, those are going to also be continued in the draft plan. So the only thing left to focus in on to address the $400 million of overprogramming is the projects that are left. There's 88 of them left that don't, that aren't included in the top four bullets. And they total $684 million. But to dig into those projects a little bit more, the first thing we decided is how much of that $400 million do we need to, how much do we need to reduce the $400 million by? So we, we decided we wanted to reduce it by about 300 and leave a lot of $100 million of overprogramming. That's about $10 million per year. That allows us some flexibility in the program to move projects around. If projects get dropped or they get other funding, we have some flexibility. So we looked at all 88 projects and we ranked them against a merit and risk criteria. Merit, overall network improvement, overall safety improvement, et cetera. And then risk, mostly financial risk with federal funds that we receive. Once we start investing in a project, there's risk if we stop working on that project. There's risk that, financial risk associated with that. So then we scored them and we bucketed them into three categories. In, projects fully funded, current level delayed. We continue to work on the project, but we're going to remove the construction funds from the project. And then out, projects that we're proposing to remove from the plan.
And Toby, is that, was there a handout that folks might have gotten on their way in?
There usually is, but we did not have one tonight. But up here is what that handout would be. So if you want to take a look at that after. Basically Plymouth is in the middle of this 25-foot radius. And these are the projects that would be included on this map. And so the green projects are projects that would be in. The blue projects are projects that are delayed. And then the orange ones are projects that are removed.
And I think a lot of the folks here tonight are here for a particular project, which is the Smith.
River, Smith Bridge.
The Smith Bridge Road, Bridge. Is that correct? Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Intersection, thank you.
And Karen, also the sidewalk along from the Armory.
Yes. But that's not on the list to be cut. Is that right?
Right, that was probably a project that was proposed to be added as part of this.
To the top, okay. So we'll hear about that from Glenn in a little bit. I just wanted to acknowledge that on this list of cuts, as Toby's talking about these buckets, the ones that are in, the ones that are being delayed. Sadly, one of the ones that's on the out list right now, which I know is why many of you are here, is that Smith Bridge Road intersection. And so I know many of you will want to talk about that. And we will, that's, we're interested in your testimony on everything. But that's what this list is. And now you've heard probably that it is out. And so that's part of why we're here to hear what you have to say.
Yep. And so we had 39 projects that stayed in. We had 15 projects delayed with the construction removed, or that $199, $200 million. And then 34 projects that were proposed to be removed from the plan, one of which is the Smith Bridge Road project with Route 25, the intersection. And then also, another important thing to note here is that in most 10-year plans, the last two years of the plan that we're adding, so in this case, it would have been 2035 and 2036, we would look for projects from the Regional Planning Commission to add in those outer years. And we would budget about $30 million per year for those projects. We're not suggesting that we add any of those new projects because of the overprogramming that we're trying to address as part of this plan.
Is that what that sidewalk project is?
That project would have been one of those projects, correct.
Thank you.
Do you want to take questions?
I'm just trying to understand what overprogramming is.
So we, so, yeah, good question. We have, we have a set amount of money. You know, it's 235 million, like I mentioned, per year. And if you look at all of the projects that we have planned over the next 10 years, we have $400 million more funds that are required to deliver those projects than we have. So we're overbudgeted, basically.
So over time, over the last few years, the costs have gone up, inflation has gone up. So we're, and revenues have either stayed the same or decreased. And so we're in a position where costs are up, revenues are down. We have to figure out how to address that shortfall. So it's really a shortfall. The overprogramming would be a shortfall, I think, is a fair way to talk about it as well.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, okay. I want to, I don't want to necessarily interrupt Toby because he's on a short, he knows he has 20 minutes. And I don't know if this is cutting into your time or.
I mean, I can talk really fast.
Yeah, all right, quick one.
Real quick one. So on a slide previously, you had escalation and inflation. Can you just differentiate that for us, please?
So inflation would be the average increase, you know, like a loaf of bread.
Eggs.
Yeah, eggs, milk, whatever.
With the escalation.
Escalation is more related to like a short-term thing that we're seeing. So like, when we came out of the pandemic, we saw an escalation in steel prices. So we wouldn't want to use that 60% increase in steel across all of our, the 10-year plan, because we see that as being more temporary, a temporary increase. So we increase those, the projects in that immediate timeframe, but then applied inflation to them for the rest of the timeframe. Does that make, is that reasonable?
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the department, I think, is trying to be, you know, reasonable, you know, fiscally responsible. Like this is, we're at a point where we know we are not able to fund the current projects. And so that's why we're looking at some very significant cuts and interested in hearing alternatives, so.
Good, good questions.
Yes, for sure.
Yep. So that wraps up the federal aid portion, the in, the in-delayed-out projects that are related to the federal program. The turnpike program and the turnpike system is an enterprise system. So it's supported by toll collection. Any tolls that we take in on, in the state, need to be used to support the turnpike system. Okay, so the turnpike system in New Hampshire is I-95 from Massachusetts to Maine. So all of I-95. The Spalding Turnpike, which is Route 16 from Portsmouth to Milton. And then the central turnpike is from Massachusetts to Concord. And it's, so it's the Effie Everett Turnpike from the Massachusetts line up through Manchester and the Mill Yard up to where it hits 93. And then it's 93 from there up to exit 14 in Concord. So the tolls that we collect on the turnpike system to Exit 14 in Concord. So the tolls that we collect on the Turnpike System need to be spent on those segments of road in New Hampshire. Need to be used. So for the Turnpike System, again, we're seeing revenues much or lower than our previous projections in our last two cycles of the 10 year plan. Again, coming, we saw a big dip during the pandemic in the Turnpike toll revenue, and our projections of seeing having it bounce back have not materialized as quickly as we had previously projected. And it's been relatively flat over the last couple of years. Our operating costs are increasing, and our Turnpike Rehab and Rehabilitation Program is also increasing. So this is the program that Turnpike uses to do their preservation work. So all of the paving and all of the bridge rehab and reconstruction on the Turnpike is paid out of the R and R program. And so those, we're seeing those projects increase as well. So the only thing left to, to look at on the Turnpike System to keep it fiscally constrained are the capital projects. There's essentially three big capital projects on the Turnpike right now. There's the Nashua, Merrimack, Bedford project, which we're proposing as part of this plan to continue to work on that and complete that project. It's currently under construction, but we need to extend out the spending over more years so that the spending matches the revenue. The Bo Concord I-93 Expansion Project that the counselor mentioned, expansion of I-93 from I-89 in Concord up to I-393, we do not have the funding, we don't have the revenue to support the construction of this project. We're going to continue with the design of the project through the public hearing, which is scheduled to be this summer. And we, and if we do not move forward with the corridor improvement here, there's several assets, bridges mostly, within that corridor that are on the red list, that we're going to need to address. And so we budgeted $75 million as part of this plan to address those bridges. And lastly, Manchester, I-293, Exit 6 and 7, so this is the Amiskeg Circle in Manchester, Exit 6. Again, we don't have the revenue to support the construction of this project. And like Bo Concord, we're going to continue with the engineering on the project through the public hearing. And one thing to note at this interchange, if you're familiar with it, we do have an interim safety improvement project that is funded in the, in the plan. Exit 6 has two southbound onramps. We're proposing to close the northernmost onramp and move traffic down to the southernmost onramp and improve that onramp for better acceleration and merge distance. But what we've heard in, in other cycles of this plan is that these projects are really needed, specifically the Bo Concord and the Manchester project. So from a, mostly from a safety standpoint, many interchanges in both of those projects are built many, many years ago with different, different traffic volumes. And also, we're seeing lots of congestion, specifically in the Bo Concord section, mostly every day in that section in both directions. It used to be Thursday, Friday, Sunday, southbound, but now it's both directions most days during the peak hours. So as part of this, part of these hearings, we want to get feedback, like the counselor mentioned, on a potential revenue enhancement for the Turnpike that would help support these projects.
Revenue enhancement is?
Toll increase.
An increase, a toll increase. Okay.
Toll increase, softer than toll increase.
I think they call that a euphemism.
Yeah. So with a toll increase, we would be able to support the construction of these two projects, plus some other programs or other projects that we've been looking to add to the Turnpike. Other safety improvements, like conversion of the Hampton tolls to all electronic tolling, like we've recently done on the Spalding Turnpike. Also, more safety projects like the median barrier projects, where we have narrow medians and we get crossover crashes. These, a toll increase would help support more of those median projects. Also, a type 2 sound wall program, which is a butter petitioned program for sound walls for properties along, along the Turnpike. One more slide on the Turnpike, and then I'm going to take a break. Actually, I'm not. I've got one more slide, then I'll take a break. We haven't seen a statewide toll increase since 2007, and in the more recent past, we've removed a couple of toll plazas on the Turnpike. We're looking at about a $1 raise order magnitude, a fifteen order magnitude at the major plazas, so Hampton, Bedford, and Hookset. And right now, in New Hampshire, when compared to other, the other 32 toll authorities, the cost per mile for the user at current rates, New Hampshire is the, is the lowest user cost. With this proposed increase, we would not be the lowest, we would move to 26. So still pretty low overall on the list with, with the increase. Okay. So we made it through all of the funding wedges here. Just real quickly, I've one slide on this, the Transportation Alternatives Program, the TAP. Every four years or every other cycle of the 10 year plan, we do a TAP, what we call a TAP round, where we ask for applications for TAP projects, mostly from municipalities is where we get these from. In this round, we budgeted $33 million for the program. We received 30 applications totaling over $50 million. So we take those applications, we score them, and what we're putting forward in this, in this plan, this draft 10 year plan, is 17 projects at the budgeted $33 million. And now, I'll hand it over to Glenn.
The Regional Planning Commissions play a large role in recommending transportation projects and themes from their communities to the department. There are five executive counselors, I'm one of five, and we have a map of the districts back there. So I represent a lot of rural New Hampshire, so mostly western New Hampshire, like Plymouth and West. And then Counselor Joe Kenny represents also a lot of rural New Hampshire as well. So some of the surrounding towns, some of the neighboring towns to here are represented by Counselor Kenny, and he and I are both very committed to supporting the, our rural communities as in particular. There are nine Regional Planning Commissions?
Correct, yeah.
There are nine Regional Planning Commissions, and I have, we have a map of their districts as well back there. And so they play an important role in giving us advice. And so we're very happy to have Glenn Treffethan from us, from Lakes Region Regional Planning Commission. Are there any members, I know there's also typically a group, a citizens group, that is advising the RPC, the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee?
Yeah.
Are there any members of the TAC here? Great. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for the work that you do, which is important to the RPC. So thank you, Glenn.
That's a great introduction. Thank you, Karen. So again, yeah, I'm Glenn Treffethan. I'm a transportation planner at Lakes Region Planning Commission. Again, it's back on the back wall over here, but this is the overview of Lakes Region Planning Commission's communities. These are member communities who pay dues for our services. There's 31, five are in District 2 here, or, and then 26 in District 1 with Joseph Kenny.
Uh huh. You, so most of your towns are in Counselor Kenny's district?
Correct. Yeah. So I've been to several other Gassett hearings, one in Franklin, Conway, with, helping out Nick Altonaga at North Country Council, and I was at one in Barnstead in District 4 with John Stephen.
All right, thank you.
So I think it's kind of been explained a little bit, but we do work with municipal representatives. These are volunteer members of the communities that they either work in or reside in, who have close ties to Planning Board, Select Board, and other boards within the communities. The TAC, which we consider the Transportation Advisory Committee, meets monthly, and during this 10 year plan process, we, we request proposals for the 10 year plans we put into, projects we put in the 10 year plan. We then, as a group, have a criteria, in which we then score these projects. And this is going to be the criteria here, the economic development, equity, mobility, natural hazard resiliency, network, road safety events, safety, and state of repair, which a lot of these mimic the merits that DOT views when, I guess, evaluating the projects that they were going to keep or put off on the 10 year plan. So projects that are continuing from the previous 10 year plan, which is 2025 to 2034, we have six of all phases. So they're completely expected to be funded through construction. None in this district, though you can see that there's a big theme in its Route 25, or New Hampshire 25, that stretches multiple counties and goes right through the northern part of Lakes Region, the Lakes Region boundaries. And then we have two delay projects where construction has moved out of the 10 year plan. And again, those are two projects on New Hampshire 25. So during this plan, we had, with other projects such as the TAP projects and the CMAC projects that you see on the screen here, we had seven projects on New Hampshire 25 in the 10 year plan. That was 11 intersections, though things have changed a little bit, and I'll get into that in the next slide. So CMAC, Meredith, New Hampshire 25 at Lake Gir Lane, that's moving forward. And then we have also a new TAP project from this previous round, which was the last slide Toby talked about, that got entered in the 10 year plan, and that's in Center Harbor on New Hampshire 25 and 25B. TAP projects are non-motorized user projects, so pedestrian, bicycle, and multimodal safety projects. So recently proposed projects, again, I just wanted to show this because there are a few, and this one specifically, the 10 year plan project at the bottom of this right here, which was on New Hampshire 25, was North Main Street from Toby Road to Foster Streeter Road, where the Common Man is. That was proposed by Plymouth and their TAC member, Joseph Perez. That was voted on, and that was the project that we had submitted to DOT to be put on the plan. So this one's unfortunately not moving forward, but it was multimodal safety improvements and a little bit of realignment of the road for critical differences. But we do have several other TAP projects that were submitted in this last round, which was in Andover, Ospe, Laconia, and Tilton, most of which were some sort of multi-use path or rail trail, with the exception of Andover, which were sidewalks and intersection improvements. So throughout all of our projects, you can notice it's a lot of safety improvements and a lot of intersection improvements, which a lot goes hand in hand with each other. So this is just kind of a spatial map of where the projects kind of landed. The project that was proposed in this last 10 year plan round in Plymouth is not shown on this map. So that, the green one up there is the CMAC project in Plymouth, which is the EV chargers at the Common Man restaurant, or inn, both. Challenges arise. So transportation infrastructure improvements are necessary for the region's safety, mobility, and economic development. You know, despite New Hampshire DOT's hard work, harder decisions have to be made. And those do trickle down to our communities. So this is a full list of the projects throughout the whole entire Lakes Region that have been affected by this current draft of the 10 year plan. So you can see the Plymouth Intersection Safety Improvements at New Hampshire 25 and Smith Bridge Road. I'm just going to highlight New Hampshire 25 for a moment. Meredith Intersection Improvements on New Hampshire 25, that's four intersections that we're looking at being, I guess, worked on to become safer, for lack of better words. And then Multinbarrel Construction for Intersection and Safety Improvements on New Hampshire 25. The way we thought, we think that the best way to move forward is coordination. So I've worked with Nick Altonaga at North Country Council on the New Hampshire 16 corridor. He also sees southern part of Geroptin County as well, and we continue to partner. But there's other ways that we partner and, you know, coordinate with each other, whether that's through our TAP inside the Lakes Region Planning Commission umbrella, or through other strategies such as the New Hampshire DOT Strategic Freight Plan, Long Range Transportation Plan, Bicycle Plan. These are the tools that we rely on to identify and evaluate the needs of our communities and the improvements that they wish to see. And these are the projects, these are the plans that we put into our TAP, TAP applications or CMAC applications or 10 year plan applications to support them. I will note that the Freight Plan recently just gone through an update. I don't know if it's finalized, but it's leasing draft form, and the same thing with the Strategic Highway Safety Plan. And then Lakes Region has done their own reports as well, with our Bicycle Ped Plan that was released in 2023, and most recently, our Midstate Transit and Human Services Transportation Plan, which, if you have not seen that, I highly encourage it. It's, it's basically identifying the needs of transit throughout our region for those vulnerable communities such as 65 years and old, 65 and older, disabled, low, low income, et cetera. And that's what I have.
Okay, I'm out of my time, over my 20 minutes. So real quick, just some primer questions as we get into feedback here. If we have our priorities right, questions about how we evaluated the projects to be removed, and then the concerns or comments regarding a toll increase to support the toll projects. And then lastly, number of ways to leave comments and comments, we'll take comments until November 6. You can mail them in, send an email to William Watson, or again, hit our comments portal that's available on our website. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Toby, and Glenn as well. We're now going to open the public hearing and take comments. As I mentioned, we're going to invite everyone to do three minutes or less for your comments. I'm here until, for as long as anyone wants to speak. So if, if you don't have a chance to say everything that you want to say in three minutes, we will go back around and, and invite anyone who still has more information they want to add or more thoughts to add. You'll have a chance to go again. But we'll start with three minutes. Glenn is going to be our timekeeper, and we'll do a 30 second warning with the yellow card, and then a little, a red card, which we'll just invite you to wrap it up from, at that point. And we do have quite a few people, 30 or so folks. I know, obviously, it's very concerning and really disappointing to see your projects not moving forward in this version. So that's what, exactly what these public hearings are for. This is, this plan is not finalized. This plan will be finalized after the public hearing process, after we finish the public hearing process, and the five executive counselors have a chance to work with DOT to make any changes that might be warranted based on what we've heard in our public hearings. So it's very important that you add your thoughts and have them be a part of the record so that I can, so that the other counselors understand, and also so that I can make the best case that I can for, for our communities. So three minutes. If you want to speak, we'll invite everyone to come forward and to introduce your name for the record. We are recording this. So this is the owl. Bill Watson is here with us from the department. Hi, Bill.
He says hi.
He says hi, very good. And so we'll also give a chance to everyone, to anyone who might be online who wants to speak, they will also have a chance. So I'm going to open up the public hearing, and I want to, in, in, in recognition of my, well, I used to be a local elected official for, I was a city councilor in Lebanon for 20 years prior to stepping up to serve at the state level, which I've been doing now for nine months, 10 months, I guess. But in recognition of my fellow local electeds, how about Chair of the Select Board, Zach Terrell. And on deck will be Vice Chair Ted Thank you for being here, and thank you very much to Plymouth for hosting us.
Wow, I get to go first?
You do.
All right. So the, my primary concern with the elimination of the two projects that Plymouth had, one on the list, one that was about to be added to the 10 year plan.
Yep.
Is that these are both safety related, very deeply safety related. Anyone who lives in or around the Plymouth area knows that the first thing you teach your teenage driver is to never, ever, ever turn left off of Smith Bridge Road.
Yeah.
It's the first thing you do. You go out, you teach them that very specifically, because we all know that someone's going to die at that intersection. We've written that letter to the Department of Transportation on multiple occasions and said, successfully, once we reduced the speed on Teddy Mountain Highway, because it is an extraordinarily dangerous intersection. Because again, we believe as a community that it's only a matter of time before someone dies at that intersection. And in fact, one of the members of the Select Board was in a pretty serious accident at that intersection within the last three years. So it is, it's a very big concern for us. It's a big concern for our community, because the danger is clear and present and, and every day. The other big project that's on that list is North Main Street. In this instance, we have a situation where the sidewalk ends, and not in the nice poetry way, but in the sidewalk physically ends, at which point it goes up and over a hill on kind of a blind corner. We would, we would love for people to be able to, to make that journey. Now, what, what tempts people and what makes people want to continue on foot as they do regularly up the road in this bad situation? Well, one, there's, there's student parking on the far side of that. So we have, we have students who are parking, long-term parking, and I think most of them also learn that if they continue to walk along the road, they're going to die. So they cut up through a different poorly lit area to get to their cars, which is, is not fantastic. The other thing is, on, as mentioned, on the other side of that is the Common Man Inn, as well as the Lodge, which is another Common Man environment. So you get people who might decide, you know, they're in town, they're enjoying our foliage, there, there are tourists who are providing some of that tax money for us, and they're here visiting, and they don't know that that's a dangerous intersection. And so when it's not a very far walk, maybe, from those hotels on that section of town into downtown, they may make that walk, maybe, you know, at, at 4:30, 5 o'clock, when it's still light, and then they decide they're going to walk back to the hotel, and now it's very dark, there's no sidewalk, it's a blind corner. We also know that the, that the National Guard is planning to upgrade that building that's right there. So they're going to put a much larger facility right in that area, and the result of that is going to be even more foot traffic on an area that is not built for foot traffic. And so again, with these two particular projects, my concern is the safety, and I just, I don't want somebody to die in our community in these two locations. And when I look at things that are approved, for instance, the expansion of the WOW Trail in the Columbia area, I like to ride a bike, it's a beautiful trail, it's a fantastic place to go. But if I was to compare a recreational bike trail project to a project that literally could save lives in this community, it's no doubt which one I would choose. Either of those two projects, and preferably both, would be on that agenda, and that's why I stand to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right. Ted Wosniewski will be up, and after that will be Jason Ninos.
Thank you. I don't know how quite to follow Zach, but first and foremost, I want I don't know how quite to follow Zach, but first and foremost, I want to reemphasize my support for the two things that Zach mentioned. And in the situation where we can't get the intersection of Smith Bridge fully addressed, I would propose we put a light there with a sensor. At the very least, people can get out of there without being killed. Secondly, I wanted to talk about the tolls. Yes, they haven't been raised in, what, almost 20 years? Budget shortfall, blinding clash, the obvious. I don't understand why we waited this long to propose increasing those rates. It's just revenue is down, spending is up, something's got to give. You know, in your business, you have to do something to address that that might mean raising prices, so why haven't we? Next up, the gas tax. We're relying on the gas tax. We're using more renewable vehicles that don't pay gas tax, they just plug them in at home, lots of people are doing it. Is there a long-term plan to address that? I'm guessing probably not, based on what I've seen. So, I would look for you to think a little bit more widely than just what has been done previous, releasing the gas tax will only encourage people to go to renewables, which will exacerbate your funding issue even further. So, I guess that's pretty much what I have to say for today.
Thank you for those. I was going to ask you if you could.
If I may, I do want to make sure that people know that a couple of years ago, the legislature did pass a registration surcharge. It's $100 for fully electric vehicles, and it's $50 for hybrid electric vehicles. So, it's a step towards what you're talking about. Nationally, there is a lot of discussion about a road usage fee, which has people pay proportionately to the mileage they drive, but there's a bit of overhead to collect that information, and it's a tough sell.
Okay. To your point on the registration fee, that's a tax on the locals. People that are driving from out of state don't pay that tax. And they do pay the tolls, but that doesn't help us up here.
Yep. Very true. Good point.
And we, some of your state representatives are here, and so that is a good message for them to hear. And for the record, it was not my idea to not raise the toll for almost 20 years. That was not my idea. I also am interested in that question. All right, Jason Ninos, and then after that, we will have County Commissioner Katie Wood Hedberg invited.
Jason Ninos, thank you for making the time to come out here tonight. I know it takes you away from your families, and I appreciate you coming to listen to us. I just want to echo the same thing as has been said before, that this is truly a safety concern of trying to turn out of that intersection and being able to have sidewalks there. I guess the biggest question I have is, do you have the data to share with us where these projects rank on your merit list that you can share with us tonight? Because that would be really helpful. And then additionally, is any kind of factor including in, you know, potential growth? Because that 25 corridor for our town is a very commercial district for our area and probably going to be subject to, you know, more growth in our development in our town, and that is only going to exacerbate the problem that we have, which, you know, Select Board Terrell pointed out this. We're worried about a fatality there, and we don't want blood spilled because we don't have the money to plan for it. And I guess my final comment is, you know, what considerations are being done for public transportation? You know, I always think that's one of the important things. You know, we talk about widening freeways and things like that, but widening the roads only exacerbates the problem. If we really want to, you know, mitigate congestion, public transportation is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, could someone address the scoring of the Smith Road-Bridge intersection project? I think I've got it on here on my phone, I think. Was it in this list that you, let's see, I'm looking at Plymouth. This is on the DOT website. If you go to the DOT website, there's a whole section for the ten-year plan, and this project, it's got their, some of their criteria anyway. Plymouth intersection improvement to the NH25 Smith Bridge Road, and it says, ranked three, recommended, merit was recommended low, risk was lowest, and it's a $3 million project. So, can you just address that? Can someone address that, please, for that project?
Yeah. Like I said in the slides, we looked at financial and overall merit of the project. So, it's because it's very local, it doesn't necessarily have the benefit to like a larger network in the state, as like a corridor project might. But we also hadn't started working on it. So, that's probably the biggest factor, is that the financial risk of excluding the project was extremely low. And so, because that financial risk was extremely low, it moved it down the list quite a ways.
Okay. Thank you for addressing that. All right. Commissioner Hedberg, and then after Commissioner Hedberg will be Representative Lucas.
Yes, Katie Wood Hedberg. I just really want to echo what our Select Board members have said, is locally, it's very much a safety issue, and most of us know someone who's been in an accident there. And as Mr. Wosniewski said, even a traffic light would save lives because something's going to happen. I will also second the idea that we have not raised tolls in a long time, and it's something to look at. But I do know that that's, if I understand correctly, that's not going to help us up here. And again, I understand the registration fees on electric vehicles, but I do think we need to look for a way to recoup some of those monies on the hybrid and electric vehicles that we're losing on the gas tax. And I'll let other local people speak. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. So, Representative Lucas, and then after that, Representative Bolton.
Good evening, and thank you so much for being here. All of this information is really helpful. I have a question from my district in Grafton County, which is Canton. And I noticed on the list that there's one project now that will happen, and it's a rebuild of a culvert on State Route 175, just north of Hulseford Road. We're under the impression that there would be a rebuild of the bridge on State Route 49 as it crosses the Penny River. I'm just wondering now what the status of that project is.
I see those here. So, these are in the book, which is also online. So, Canton does have the project that you were talking about on 175, which is construction in '27. The bridge project is in the plan, and it is for construction, it looks like in 2030. So, not soon, but it is in the plan.
Yeah. That's right. Yeah. So, part of the other thing we did when we looked at the projects is we also had to look at where they lined up with the funding in each year. And so, because of that, some of the projects, even though not removed from the ten-year plan, they've been delayed some to, again, spread out the spending in the years that we have the funding in. That's probably the result of that Canton Bridge project.
Thank you. And I only see in the plan here, I only see construction costs. Does that mean that the engineering and right-of-way costs were done in a previous plan?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's, and so that's why, for example, that project would have scored higher in terms of risk on your assessment because you were already invested in the, the engineering was done.
That, and it's a bridge project.
And it's a bridge project, which we are, we want to continue working on our bridges because we're doing a good job, and we want to keep doing, okay. Hopefully, that helps clarify. Thank you. Thank you. Representative Bolton, and then after that, I have Karen Prince.
Thank you. Representative Bolton from Grafton County, House District 8, representing Plymouth, Polk and Ashland. And I rise in favor of, I guess, read statement of a couple of projects that were taken out from Plymouth, you know, whatever, highways. And Route 25 specifically is a very dangerous intersection, and I would assume that we could probably work with someone to maybe target a cheaper solution. I heard putting in a light would be a good satisfactory solution. Maybe that would be indeed the case. So, I would advocate to work towards that. We mentioned increasing the gas tax by five cents, increasing the tolls by a dollar. I'm on the Ways and Means Committee at the House. Honestly, we've given up $1 billion in revenue over the past three biennia. So, unless you've kind of nailed down who might support something like that and actually make it work, that'd be great. I would be an advocate, but I'm one of 10, so. And I'm also the Executive Director of Transport Central. We provide emergency medical transportation to people over 60 and/or disabled, and I've become a large advocate for public transportation. And we are working with DOT to facilitate that, and it seems like we might be on the verge of a solution. Hopefully, there's going to be, you know, revenue also allocated for that to continue, you know, that work. And I'm also advocate for passenger rail, which doesn't seem to be too popular anymore. I know we're actually doing.
Popular in this room. Popular in this room. Got that, you really noticed.
No, Bolton, Grafton. I know, like, Vermont Rail kind of came into the state, we're actually doing some advancement towards freight. Passenger rail should be at least on a target. I know money is an issue, so in any event, I'll file some comments online, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. All right, Karen Prince. And then after that, Scott Whedon.
So, I'm Karen Prince. I am a lifelong resident of Plymouth, and I'm also a second-generation business owner here in the community. And our business is actually located on Smith Bridge Road, so I am widely familiar with that intersection. We have a fleet of 20-plus vehicles that are entering and exiting that intersection on a daily basis. But I also understand that there's a lot of support in this room to kind of get that project back on the ten-year plan. I know when I attended this meeting for the last go-around, you know, the support was we needed to accelerate it. And to come here today and find it gone from the plan is pretty frustrating. So, I understand their support, and that's great, so I'm glad everyone's here. I think what I will say is, Councilor, I think the toll increase is, you know, the first step that we need to take. The information given about the tolls and how it's spent was really good information. When you talk about the impact to the residents, most of the tolls, I think, is it, over on the seacoast, 80% of those tolls, I think, are out-of-state registrations. And then in Hooksett, I believe it's close to 60% of those tolls are paid by out-of-state registrations, commuters, people. And then there's ways, you know, obviously, the Executive Council has the authority to increase the tolls. So, that's kind of, I don't want to say a quick fix, but that's something that might be an easier sell rather than the legislation of trying to, you know, gain traction to increase the gas tax. So, I will say I'm fully in support of increasing the tolls. You know, talk to your counselors. If you are a resident in one of the communities with another counselor, reach out to them, talk to them. I think increasing the tolls is probably the way to go at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, after Scott, I know we have some families with kiddos here, and so I want to invite you guys to testify next, okay?
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Yes. Scott, go ahead, and they can.
Scott is, he's going to pass on this.
He's going to pass. Okay, thank you, Scott. We have certainly heard a lot from the town of Plymouth. All right, yes, please. And tell me what your name is so I can pull your card out.
Hi, my name is Trevor Wassell. So, I live on Foster Street, and with the sidewalk plan, that's why I'm here. We, my wife and I, my daughter, and my neighbors also here, we frequently walk downtown, and I can only tell you that living there, you see how many other people walk down, from the police station, from the housing on Fairgrounds Road. There is an incredible amount of pedestrian traffic down Route 3, not just from Foster Street, but all the way up, I'd say to about the police station or even the Plymouth house. And it's just a very unsafe road to walk on. I am less than a half mile from the downtown sidewalk system, maybe even a quarter mile, but to get to that sidewalk system, I have to cross Route 3 three times, where people are going 55 miles an hour. I have many times, so the sidewalk on that bridge on Route 3, on the Baker River Bridge, is on the other side from where the walkways, the herd path walkways are. So, you either have to walk over an old railroad bridge, which I did till I had my daughter, but now I have to cross over, walk over the sidewalk, walk back over, walk up Old North Main, which is fine, but even at the end of Old North Main, there used to be a crosswalk there. Anyone remember that one? And they got rid of it. So, like, they're making the town less safe to walk a half mile, have to cross Route 3 three times, cars go 55, and I can't be the only one that does this, so I hope that if you guys prioritize something, it's safety. So, the people, hundreds of people I see walking, maybe it's the same people over and over again, but walking up and down, walking from the police station, they need a safe path to walk before somebody gets hurt, and I just hope they build it before my kids get old enough that they're the ones that get hurt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marissa Strong. I also live on Foster Street next door to Trevor. First of all, I want to thank everyone because it has been louder with little ones in the room, and I really appreciate just the patience and understanding. I am a federal grants manager, so I understand that there's not money for everything all the time. I totally get that, but I also believe strongly that you cannot put a price tag on safety. And for me, the Foster Street project with the sidewalks is a huge safety issue. We have, just like Trevor was saying, and I'm going to repeat a lot of what he said, but there are college students, there are visitors from out of town that are staying at the Common Man. Those, the Common Man has hundreds of weddings probably every season, and I think the downtown Main Street businesses would receive so much more money, and it would really boost our economy if we had a direct line for those folks to go enjoy our local businesses. I think a sidewalk going down from Foster Street down to Main Street would really help. My little one goes to the PSU Childcare Center, and we often will bike or walk to get to him, but it's not safe crossing the street, crossing Route 3. Everyone drives so fast, everyone's driving faster these days. He was saying 55 miles an hour. It's true. I've had to sprint across the road for my life, like, people don't see us, people don't think to stop because there's no sidewalk, there's no crosswalk, there's not a safe way for us to cross. I've walked down the train tracks a couple of times to avoid that. I was told specifically from the trail, the train managers, that I'm trespassing. So, I can't even try to stay safe because I'm now trespassing on the only safe way for me to get downtown. I think that putting this project on the side is a really bad decision. You can't put a price tag on safety, and nobody wants to get injured or hurt. There's college kids, there's people walking from the Fairgrounds Road, there's affordable housing on there. Many people have to walk all the way from the Fairgrounds to town to get to their business, to get to their job, to get to whatever services they need. So, I would highly recommend reconsidering that project. It would affect a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with kiddos? All right, I think we got them. Good, all right. Next, we'll have Steve St. Pierre, and after that, Joseph Perez.
Steve St. Pierre, Plymouth Highway. So, as everyone mentions, the bridge on Route 3 is very dangerous. It's got a sidewalk on it that leads nowhere. I mean, what you, you have to cross it three times, like he's right, you know, there's a lot of close calls. Also, on Route 3, Smith Road, all my trucks are not allowed to take a left there because it's so dangerous. There's not enough response time for a dump truck to get out of the way. We've had too many close calls, but now we're forced to because that bridge is now 10 tons. So, now we will need flaggers probably to get out on Smith Road.
Now, what is the status of that bridge? It's been down, it was, there was an inspection, and now it's been downgraded.
Yes, it's posted right now at 10 tons.
And that means your trucks cannot go over.
That is true. They have to use the interstate or another way around to get around it. We continue to look at that bridge to determine if we can do an interim improvement to get some of that capacity back into the bridge, so we understand the inconvenience it's causing, and we continue to look at alternatives. There is a project in the plan to do a preservation project on it or a preservation treatment on it, and at the same time, we'll be, continue to look to alternatives to get it back to legal, if we can.
So, which bridge? Is that this bridge, the?
That is, this bridge.
US 3 and New Hampshire 25 rehabilitation of bridge carrying US 3 and 25 over the Baker River? Okay, that's in here for '29, engineering in '29 and '31, and construction in '32.
And we will be talking. And we will be talking about working at that to see if we can advance it with the recent posting.
I know we did something for, I think we have an emergency mechanism for fire trucks to be able to go over, is that correct, that we've done that?
Yes.
So that for public safety, we can address that. I didn't realize there was still such an impact to your, to your public works operations. Okay, thank you.
And for tolls, I'm for, just for out-of-staters.
Yeah, all right, heard. Let's see, Joseph Perez, and then after that, Marissa Strong.
Good evening, Joseph Perez, Director of Planning and Economic Development here in Plymouth. Thank you, Counselor, Assistant Commissioner, other DOT staff. I certainly appreciate you guys coming up to join us here in Plymouth and listening to folks. Obviously, there's a lot of interest in this, so it's really important. I just want to start dialing back a little bit to the purpose of the ten-year plan, as outlined in RSA two forty colon one, which is to serve as the guideline for transportation projects in the state for the next ten years. You know, and these projects that are on the plan, that have already been added, in one form or another, have been identified and added to the plan, because they are a regional priority. So I really urge you folks, the DOT, the GACIT, everyone, as you look forward to updating this draft, consider looking at some other ways to address these issues, particularly keeping, consider keeping projects on the plan to keep the integrity of this as a guideline document, because funding may fluctuate. I mean, projections had to change for this plan, they may have to change again in the future, over the next ten to twelve years. So leaving flexibility in there is key. And if additional funding becomes available, towns shouldn't have to start from square one, reapplying with these projects that have already been identified as regional priorities. So to speak a little bit to some of these specific projects, I would just really try to emphasize that these are regional priority projects and have been identified. I serve on the TAC as the Vice Chair. And the TAC, the Lakes Region Planning Commission, approved both of these projects, because their impact is not specific to Plymouth. So I'll start with Route Twenty-Five, right? It covers both of these, both of these areas. Excuse me, the Route Twenty-Five, Tenny Mountain Highway, Smith Bridge Road intersection is really a part of the east-west corridor that connects much of rural Grafton County to I-93, to Spear Memorial Hospital. And it's really a lifeline corridor. So we had in 2019, over three hundred and eighty people sign a letter supporting the Smith Bridge Road, Tenny Mountain Highway intersection improvement. And when you look at who signed that letter, I mean, it's not just Plymouth. You've got, and I've got the names right here, you know, three hundred and eighty people. Plymouth, Romney, Wentworth, Warren, Hebron, Plymouth, Plymouth, Campton, Hebron, you know, they're, they're, thank you. They're from all over the region. So both of these projects are on Route Twenty-Five, both of these projects are critical safety projects on that corridor. And I really urge you guys to consider, you know, keeping, maintaining both of these projects in some way, exploring other ways. Keep them viable, keep them on the plan, whether that's looking for LPA opportunities, cost savings, or other ways to just keep them as a placeholder for future revenues. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Joseph. Marissa Strong, and then after that, Trevor, wait.
I think Marissa was just this morning, I spoke to her there.
She's the.
Oh, thank you, great. Well then, wonderful. And did Trevor also speak, that was also Trevor? Uh-huh, excellent. Okay, so then Avery Opeland, and after that, John Christ or Christ? Christ.
Hi, I'm Avery Opeland, I'm Planner One, working with the Town of Plymouth Planning Department. And I also wanted to go off what my colleague Joseph happened to just say. I believe that it's integral for the ten-year plan to maintain a set of flagged DOT concerns, even if they are not currently funded, to maintain the integrity of the plan and remind us all that these are currently flagged as issues. Also, we'd love to have partnership between the town and state levels of government for potential exploration of lower-cost improvements to help everyone in this town and on the Route Twenty-Five corridor, as you've heard a lot about tonight. And we've heard a lot of support for those lower-cost improvements. So we're absolutely willing to work with the state. As a personal anecdote, as a graduate of Plymouth State University, I can vouch that there is no safe way to access student and staff parking from the main campus. You either have to go on the previously described lack of sidewalks on Route Twenty-Five, or a very dark, dimly-lit, icy pathway, which I've known multiple people who've got injured on. So it's a safety concern for students as well. In conclusion, I think that we've got to focus on how our communities connect and let them grow. This is an integral part of that, and I'm just hoping that we can work towards some alternative solutions. Speaking as a private citizen, not as a town employee, I also support an increase to the tolls.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Avery. John Christ, and after that, will be Judy Hall.
Good evening, John Christ. I do serve on the Plymouth Planning Board and Town Development Committee, as well as the LRC, although I come here tonight just as a citizen. And I want to echo what everyone else has so well articulated this evening, including this, keeping these projects on the plan, especially since there are possibilities for other funding sources that seem long overdue. We've heard a lot from members of DOT and other people about inflation costs and such. And yet, all of our funding sources seem to have been flatlined for a long time. And why aren't we raising those other funding sources? So until they are raised, which they should be and hopefully will be, all these should really stay on the plan. The concerns for safety are very real. In addition to whatever everyone else has said, I will also add, you know, the Smith Bridge Road intersection, not only are people afraid to turn left, people will drive miles out of their way to avoid that intersection. People, people will make right turns rather than a left turn, thereby making other intersections dangerous. And, you know, looking forward, you know, we can't, like, chop our futures off here. All of these roads, including these intersections we're talking about, are only going to get worse. There's more and more development along Tenny Mountain Highway that is going to make the traffic flow there more and more busy all the time, as we've seen it get more busy. We've already heard about the Armory on Route Three North of Plymouth. They're expanding, and their goal is to have a more public-facing community-oriented facility, which is going to increase traffic flow in and out of a driveway, which is at the very precipice of that blind hill. And that really needs to be addressed. So there are lots of safety concerns, and it is part of a thoroughfare in a corridor that's important to our public safety, that feeds our fire trucks and everything to our town and other towns that we also serve. It also serves tourists, economic development in the region. There are people who go along these corridors to go to and from the highway, to go to and from our grocery stores and a Walmart and all these other places. Some of them are locals, a lot of them are tourists, and you can look at the license plates and the parking lot. They also need to be safe, and we'd like them to continue to come here to this region. So we continue to have a prosperous region, not only for our locals and safe for our locals, but for others who wish to join us here for all that we have to offer as well. So I really think, yes, the current situation is dire, and it's only going to be worse, and we really need to plan for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, Judy Hall, and then will be Terry Palmer.
My name's Judy Hall, I'm a Romney resident and serve on the Romney Planning Board. My concern is primarily with Smith Bridge Road intersection. That on Smith Bridge Road, there are town playing fields, which there are lots and lots of cars that are parked there. Especially now with football season and lacrosse season, there are a lot of people. I would assume most of them are probably parents, but there are some older siblings driving kids. And then there are businesses on the road that have vehicles that are coming out. And then from Romney, you know, there are an awful lot of us from Romney, which that's the shortest way to get into Plymouth. Although, there are many people that go around through Romney Village and go that way. In fact, the town administrator today was telling me that they see a lot more traffic coming through that way because of people avoiding that intersection. My granddaughter sent me a message here, October second, bad accident coming off Smith Bridge Road out to Tenny Mountain. Looks like it's going to be a while before they get it cleaned up. I don't know anything about what that accident was, but she was sending me a warning about that. It is something that has been of concern to people in Romney for a while. When there was the proposal to put a, I don't know what it was, ninety-five-room hotel on Smith Bridge Road, our selectman wrote a note, wrote a letter to the Plymouth Planning Board saying, you know, this is not, you know, we can't have that kind of traffic on this road here. It's really detrimental to not only people coming out of the road, but the traffic on Route Twenty-Five. And this past summer, I have noticed so much more traffic on Twenty-Five. There have been days that, coming out of Hannaford parking lot, you can see cars all the way to the highway that are, you know, in line there, and it just makes the ability to get out of Twenty-Five, out of Smith Bridge, difficult. So, yeah, even a traffic sign would be really beneficial. Or not, traffic lights.
A light, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Judy. All right, Terry Palmer, and after that, will be Laura Shears.
Thank you, Counselor and Commissioner. So my name is Terry Palmer, I'm the statewide mobility manager, and part of my role is I work with community transportation folks. So I'm basically your answer to public transportation, sort of. I've been working very closely with Bill to try and get public transportation here in Plymouth. It's not something that you can kind of snap your fingers and do, it takes a lot of planning. As you can see, the forty-three point three of transit funding is ten percent. That is federal flow-through funding that comes into the New Hampshire DOT. And as you heard Toby say earlier, public transit and some of our on-demand transportation receives just over a million and a half. Honestly, in order for us to improve transportation in the state of New Hampshire, we need to be between five and eight million dollars from the state. They are doing everything they can in this fiscal climate that we're in to listen to options. Everything from, you know, the gas tax to maybe some toll credits could go to public transit. We're now hearing that, you know, the toll credits go towards the turnpike, and we understand that. But just know that the public transportation folks are at the table, New Hampshire DOT. I can say from national, going to different conferences and so on and so forth nationally, we are so happy to have the relationship we do with New Hampshire DOT. So another part of my role is I work very closely with New Hampshire, I'm sorry, regional planning commissions, complete streets, the safety of the streets, obviously, if you can't get to the bus stop, you're not going to use it anyways. So, you know, we do also have regional coordinating councils. And I know that there's been some different maps showing different regional lines.
You guys have another map, too?
So here's another one. So regional coordinating councils don't follow any of these. We do have eight regional coordinating councils in the state of New Hampshire. If you're interested in joining one of these transportation groups or transportation coordinating councils, please let me know. Like I said, you know, you were talking about connecting communities, that's what we're all about, right? I came in earlier today to talk to Bill about the transportation here in Plymouth. And as I'm going to the senior center, I'm like, you have Amtrak trains. I was like, so does Amtrak stop here? And he's like, no. I know it's a lot of money for rail lines, but I just wanted to introduce myself and just let you guys know that public transportation is coming to Plymouth. So as we continue to have the community meetings, please fill the room like you did tonight, and we'll keep the conversation going, so, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry. Okay, Lori Shears, and then after that, Molly McCann.
Laura left, so.
Who left, Laura left, okay. All right. Then, is it McCann?
It's McCann.
McCann, oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right, it's a strange name, so Molly McCann.
Well, wait, and then let me just say who's on deck is Graene, Graena. G-R-A-E-N-E.
Graham, G-R-A-E-M-E.
Graham, Graham Burdis.
We gave you two hard names in a row.
I know, okay, thank you.
So I am on the Plymouth Planning Board, but I'm really here to speak just for myself. I'd like to advocate for what Joseph Perez said and Avery said about keeping our two projects of Smith Bridge Road and North Main Street at least somehow on the radar of DOT for all of the reasons already stated by my fellow citizens. I would also like to reiterate advocacy for better trains, train transport. We used to have robust train transport, even in, you know, just a little before I was born in the eighties. People who are alive who can describe going down to Boston on the train from Plymouth, that's unimaginable to me. And I think that's a real shame. I think that it would be a really smart way to take advantage of the tourism industry that we have here. Additionally, I advocate for the increase of the tolls again, because that's another way we can, as a state, take advantage of our really robust tourism industry. I think generally speaking, as a state, we do a poor job of managing our tourism, and again, taking advantage of the fact that this is really a big part of our economic base at this point. So getting creative about how we really capitalize on the strengths of our state in that way, especially because there is a strong out-of-state presence here because of that. So in terms of gas tax, seems like a good idea, I don't have a strong feeling about that, so, thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Molly. All right, Graham, and then after that, will be Regina Rinaldo.
Hello, my name is Graham Burdis, I'm a resident of Plymouth. I, um, I kind of wanted to talk about both plans and reiterate what other people have said. Smith Bridge, the first thing my dad told me when I learned to drive was, don't turn left on Smith, as people said. I'm also a little concerned about, you know, I understand that this can't be put into the funding now, but like, that this will be forgotten in the future. And also, the idea of putting in a light, while I support that for the safety perspective, I'm once again worried that people will get complacent and not follow through with the actual intersection improvements, especially because the congestion on Twenty-Five, as people said, have gotten worse, especially over the summer. And a lot of that congestion comes from the lights at Hannaford and at Market Basket. And I'm worried that, like, if that congestion increases, then people might call to widen the road, and that would decrease safety even more, which is why those intersection improvements were put forward instead of a traffic light. I'm also, I also support the Main Street Toby Road thing. I biked on Main Street many times before I had a car, and it was very nerve-wracking. And the, you know, one of the things that I saw when I looked through that proposal was that the engineering firm that kind of went through the proposals, like Plymouth offered it as a two-phase plan. And the engineering people said this was so vital that it should have been proposed as a one-phase plan. And yet, it's not being added at all. And I don't really understand that, especially when, as people said earlier, things that aren't as safety-focused are getting added to the plan when these two very important things that will save lives have been cut.
Thank you, Graham. All right, Regina Rinaldo, and then after that, Brenda Hock.
Hello, my name's Regina Rinaldo, I'm Plymouth resident and a business owner. We own Longview Farm, which is on Quincy Road, where Smith Bridge turns into Quincy Road, as you're. where Smith Bridge turns into Quincy Road as you're heading towards Romney. And, yeah, so Smith Bridge intersection is a pretty important intersection, not only for our patrons to our business, but our employees. And we, I drive it every day as I drive my daughter to her childcare center, heading into Plymouth. It is a difficult intersection, not just going left, but also going right. People creep out further and further to see what's going on because, you know, you don't want to turn if you can't see. I've had several tricky situations where I was ready to turn, and then someone decided to start, a motorcycle in fact, that I didn't see behind another car, started to go into the turning lane. That's not the only time that's happened. And then I'm left in the middle of the highway there. It's a really tricky spot. And the turning lane is not helpful. People are using it as a passing lane. And that makes it pretty scary. But I did also want to just say, you know, aside from that, those are just real true safety, you know, my own experience driving that spot. But I did want to echo some of the things I've heard, just really loving the idea of maintaining the integrity of the document. That sounds like this, a lot of work has gone into thinking about this intersection, and to dismiss it immediately would really hurt the integrity of the document. I like that word, and I think it's a big document. A lot of work has gone into it, and it'd be great to just, not just forget about the projects that seem really important. And I also, wanting to kind of mention to the hotel that was proposed, there were many reasons that, you know, during public, you know, public hearings in this town, many reasons why that didn't, that project didn't, people were not interested in having that project go through. But it seemed on the planning board, the final tipping point was safety concerns, specifically with that intersection. Studies were done at that intersection on both sides, and that still seemed to be the main sticking point. And that, until that intersection was addressed, further development along that road and close to that intersection is going to continually be tricky. And it is growing, it's growing significantly. Is that my end?
The end, the end.
That went fast. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, all right. We have Brenda next, and then after that Nate. Brendan, Brendan, and after that Nate Everts.
Thank you. My name is Brendan Hoke. I am a resident of Plymouth for the last twenty-one years. I'm also an accident survivor of the Smith Bridge Road intersection.
Oh.
So this is not a new issue. This has been going on for quite some time. Many years ago, I invited your predecessor, Mike Cryans, to address this issue. He brought then-Assistant DOT Commissioner Bill Cass to a select board meeting. And if you, I don't know how far back the PPTV archives go, but you can find that online perhaps. This is not a new issue. I don't view this as a funding challenge. I view this as a prioritization challenge. You've got eleven projects on that board. You're proposing to cut twenty-five percent of them. Twenty-five percent in our area. You funded I-93 to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars. We're asking for a few million to improve intersection where you've already heard everybody talk about the volume of cars that go through that intersection. Also, there's a management issue because I believe a few years ago, there were some rumble strips installed on Route 25 in the Plymouth area inadvertently along the shoulders. Those were heard from my house, which is miles away, and were subsequently removed. I'm not sure who paid for that. That's money that could have been spent on this project. And so because of that lack of communication, that lack of management, now we're stuck here begging for this project to get put back on the books so that our citizens don't get killed, as our selectmen previously mentioned. This is the same as the I-95 guardrail issue that's been in the news lately. This is next, this is next. A few years ago, when I addressed this issue, I begged the DOT. I said, if nothing else, educate the public. Tell people how to use the left-turn lanes. It's in the driver's manual. I'm training my son right now on driver's education, okay? I challenged Mr. Reynolds, Ms. Hill, Mr. Davidson, Mr. Rodriguez. Go try to do that left turn from Smith Bridge Road to Route 25 on a busy Saturday.
No, thank you. Doesn't sound very safe.
This project needs to be reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Nate is next, and after that Joyce Weston. Is there Nate? Yes, okay, thanks Nate.
Nate Everts.
Nate Everts, okay.
I am also a Plymouth resident. I also own Longview Farm with my wife. And, yeah, I'm just going to echo what everyone's been saying about the Smith Bridge intersection. It's horrible, like Judy said, yeah, it was the second. There was another accident there. You know, we've got, you know, two to five hundred cars coming to our vegetable stand throughout the summer, like, seven days a week. We've got, you know, the ball fields down there with cars full of kids, you know. Seems like there's at least one accident there every year. And, you know, I feel like a lot of people have tried to get this issue addressed for years, and now it's something that's going to be kicked off the list. It's kind of, well, very unfortunate, and I don't think it should happen. And like everyone's been saying, it's only a matter of time before, like, does someone have to give their life for this intersection to actually be corrected? Because that doesn't seem right. And I hope that we can make something happen and, you know, have it be addressed. And as far as tolls going up, I think that's great. Gas tax going up, that's great. Anyway, we can milk some more money out of mass to pay for what we do. Good to me.
Thank you, Nate, good. Joyce Weston, and then after Joyce will be Diane Tiffany.
Yes, Joyce Weston, a resident of Plymouth. And I don't have a lot to add, but I do have one anecdote. Also want to mention that for me to get here, I had to go one of those two routes. There's no other way. And I avoid Smith Bridge Road if I can possibly do it, or I make a right turn, make a U-turn at the electric and then come back. Coming this way, I have encountered a really, really scary situation. The bicycles are hard enough when they come up over the road. It's a blind hill. But I once encountered a man pushing an elderly man in a wheelchair up that hill. And I'm thinking, that, I just, I stayed behind him in a protective sense. But this is just really, it's a disaster waiting to happen. So it's a matter of safety. I agree with everything everybody else is saying.
Thank you, Joyce. Honorable Joyce Weston, former state representative. All right, Diane Tiffany, and after that will be Marcy Wasnewski.
I'm going to pass.
Okay.
Diane Tiffany, I'm a little on Steel Drive, which is a private road off of Fairgrounds Road. Well, thank you for being here tonight. I think at this point, I'd just like to echo a lot of the comments that were said tonight about that Smith Bridge intersection. You know, in addition to the growth on Tenny Mountain Highway, which has resulted in a lot more traffic over the last twenty years, Fairgrounds Road is also a very busy place. You know, we've talked about Longview Farm and the businesses on Smith Bridge Road. There's a vet there. But then you get on Fairgrounds, and we have two affordable housing complexes there, a senior housing complex, four churches. There's a lot of activity on Fairgrounds, so we're just feeding into that. But that is a very dangerous intersection, Smith Bridge and Tenny Mountain Highway, as we've all talked about tonight. But another thing to consider is, I think it's the frustration and anger that people feel trying to get out of Smith Bridge Road that makes it a safety concern, too. As Brendan said, you know, you make that left turn, but nobody knows how to use that middle lane, including myself. You know, so, you know, God forbid you pull out, then you're stuck there waiting to merge into the other lane. So it's useless. I noticed the other day there are arrows on that middle lane, too, which makes no sense to me. But anyway, yeah, it's just a very dangerous intersection and it's a big safety concern. Thanks for considering it.
Thank you, Diane. All right, we'll have Tom Newcomb, and then on deck will be Viking Hepburn.
Good evening, Tom Newcomb. I'm the building inspector in town, a member of Plymouth Fire Rescue, but most importantly, a resident. And I want to piggyback on a couple of comments that the highway department director mentioned about the bridge over, on North Main Street, over the Baker River. And that with the ten-ton limit, which is now, his trucks are no longer able to go through it. There is an exception for emergency vehicles. But keep in mind, we're now overburdening a bridge which is not even being thought about being repaired within the next ten years. So what's going to happen when this finally makes it onto the plan and we're overburdening it with emergency vehicles over the next ten years? And what happens if it further corrodes and we're not able to use it for emergency vehicles? To switch gears real quickly up to the Smith Bridge Road, Tenny Mountain area, I encourage the four of you here and anybody involved in making this decision to please go up there anytime, not just on a busy Saturday. There is no good time to try and make that left-turn turn. Everybody refers to it as the suicide lane, that lane in the middle for making left-hand turns off of it because you try and merge into that and hope that you can get over in time. But also, in terms of public safety, Warren Wentworth EMS was a private EMS service that went out of business a few months ago. And Plymouth EMS was, Plymouth Fire Rescue was asked to step up and serve those communities. So we're looking at a good, easy thirty-minute ride on a good day to respond to one of these calls, going through that intersection, and then coming back to transport to the spare hospital. So that intersection has a severe impact on, not just on chances of accidents there, but also response times for EMS services. And also, from a building inspector's standpoint, I'm seeing a significant amount of activity of businesses looking to expand up there. That road is a gateway to the western part of the state. And we're just going to see a further increase in load on that road. So it needs to be addressed quickly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom. Viking Hepburn, and on deck is Larry Major.
I want to thank you all for coming tonight and listening to many similar things being said over and over again. I'll speak just for the duration of the issue on Smith Bridge. There's some people here who went to high school with my sons. And so we're talking graduating in '09 and '13, and they play lacrosse down those fields. And they were instructed clearly not to, when they could drive, to go on that road. But there's a number of adolescent males, that I say are optimistic on their chances of getting through there. And I've seen some really harrowing aspects. Now, the issue of avoiding that means you come back through, going north from Quincy Road down to 25, and then you come down 25 where people are trying to walk across a place with no sidewalks. So these are very interrelated issues. And I think the issue of risk, I know we're talking more financial risk and involvement in a project, but these are really big safety issues that do impact our community in a very significant way. The other thing I just want to add is, one, I'm not thrilled with trying to increase the gas tax with the idea that it affects folks who are really struggling. And they're struggling with very high property taxes because the federal money coming down is decreasing, is passed out to the state. The state is not stepping up, but rather retreating. And those are all falling back on our property taxes, which is a very challenging time. So adding that burden of increased gas tax, I think, would be very significant. I'm also not a big fan of taxing efficient cars because, yes, it's not an immediate cost, but it's a high cost on our environment, and I'd like to encourage less fossil fuel consumption. And the third thing, I really like the idea of upping the tolls, particularly if there's a local exemption, and also if there could be an exemption for those, or a reduction for those that are forced to commute. But you have control over that. You can really focus of how that impacts people in our community. And just thinking one dollar, we went, Kate and I went out to dinner the other night, and the bill was a hundred and ten dollars. We had, each had a beer and a reasonable meal. So somebody coming up from New Hampshire paying three dollars instead of one dollar, I don't think is going to influence coming to spend time in our beautiful state, particularly if it's not polluted and it has good transportation. So, thank you.
So with regard to the potential toll increase, I think we've talked about that there is, with the EZ Pass system, it makes it quite easy, actually, to do discounts for people who have their, who are registered, have their vehicle registrations in New Hampshire. So that's a way to give a discount. And then we also have, the department has also looked at doing frequent, you know, frequent flyer discounts, so for commuters in particular. Is that correct?
That is right. When we talk about the eighty percent, twenty percent that Karen referenced when she was speaking, that's eighty percent non-New Hampshire EZ Pass users. It's a revenue that comes from, eighty percent non-New Hampshire EZ Pass users is a revenue that's collected at the Hampton Toll. Twenty percent New Hampshire EZ Pass users. In Hookset, the revenue comes, sixty percent of the revenue comes from non-New Hampshire EZ Pass users and forty from New Hampshire EZ Pass users. There's currently a thirty percent discount for New Hampshire EZ Pass users. And one of the options that we would have is what we would call a frequent user discount. So on a monthly basis, if you go through the tolls more than thirty times, every additional trip after thirty would not be paid for for a personal vehicle toll, which would help to take the curse off the commuters. And as much as we in New Hampshire say, oh, well, we're sticking it to the out-of-state people, if you're a Maine EZ Pass user, you get a discount in Maine. If you're a Massachusetts EZ Pass user and you go through the tolls in Massachusetts, you get a discount on the toll. So they're sticking it to us when we travel in those states. So there's a little bit of balance, of balance there.
Good, thank you for that clarification. So we have Larry Major, and after Larry is going to be Chris Woods.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here, DOT and counselor. I'm here with Pike Industries and also speaking for New Hampshire Good Roads Association. We totally support your priority of maintaining the current system. We support a toll increase. We also recognize that that's probably not enough, and we would support additional revenues. New Hampshire's not unique. Right now, in 2025, there are thirty-nine other states who are trying to put more money towards their DOT through various mechanisms, gas tax increases, indexing their current gas tax, raising money off the sale of brand-new tires. So we could, as a state, we could think about a whole portfolio of different ways to fund our highway system. One last, I think this is still accurate, if you tell me. One cent increase in gas tax is eight million dollars?
It's about eight million, yes.
So a nickel's forty million?
And what's that?
A nickel's forty million?
Yes.
Over ten years, it's four hundred million.
Yes.
So, okay, my math's still good. All right, all right. So I agree with Karen. I just think we got to go a little bit, we got to go for more, got to go for more. That's my, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. We have Chris Woods, and then after Chris will be Grace. Great, okay, thank you, Chris. All right, Grace, and after Grace will be Lisa Donner.
Is there another person?
I don't have a last name, so, is this you?
It's late, so.
All right.
Okay, so Irene Grace Garvey. I'm a local Plymouth resident. And I have a near-death experience on, in relation to Smith Bridge Road and experience on, in relation to Smith Bridge Road, and it was the worst driving experience I've had in almost 50 years of driving. And I learned how to drive, thank heavens to my dad, around the 128 corridor south of Boston. So I'm no sissy when it comes to driving. So I'm heading, you know, towards, we'll say Walmart, and I go past Hannaford's, and I go past Market Basket, you know, and I'm going through those lights, they're green, and I'm doing 30. And I get up to Smith Bridge Road, and I am less than from this wall to this wall, and someone comes out of Smith Bridge and takes that left we've all been hearing about without stopping. I am not kidding, without stopping. So what do I do? I slam on my brakes, right? I'm like, I lock them up. I have to pull in behind this person coming out and like go into Smith Bridge, onto like the other side of the road, and thank God someone wasn't on the other side of Smith Bridge Road in order to not T-bow in that person. I spoke to a local, I was explaining that situation, and I'm like, you know, my heart's going crazy, I'm like, oh my gosh, my brake light turned on and never turned off. Whatever. But I spoke to a local, and they said, "Oh yeah, people do that all the time, so they can make their left turn." I'm happy to describe this story, but I grew up, right? Learning how to drive, 50 years of driving, had a lot of experience in my body, right? In my reflexes, like if you're 17, 16, just got your license, you're a mom or a dad listening to screaming kids in the back of your car, I would be fearful if someone just blew that stop sign to make their left turn. So I say, don't take that out of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Lisa, and then after that we'll go online.
Yeah, so I'm just speaking as a resident, but I do have a lot of hats I wear in the community, and in some of these hats, I have been, again and again and again and again and again, confounded and blocked in our attempts to improve the community by the fact that our major passageways through the community are state-owned roads. And we can't get improvements on these state-owned roads. We can't get bike lanes on them, we can't get traffic lights on them, we can't get rotaries on them, we can't get improvements to them, because the main corridors through our town, connecting us to anything else, are state-owned. And so, you know, there's so many things I can list, but things that haven't come up yet is that Tenny Mountain Highway connects to Tenny Mountain Ski Area, connects to Remney Rocks Hiking Area, which is an international class hiking site, and we have a lot of international visitors as well as out-of-town visitors using Smith Bridge Road as our access to everything. We have lumbering yards, we have very large trucks that pass through there. This is the corridor by which lumber comes from Canada into the lower 88 states of the northeast, all right? Other things that haven't been mentioned? E-bikes. All right? I have traveled a lot across this country in the last year or so, and what I have found is so many near instances of traffic accidents involving e-bikes, and there are no bike lanes in Plymouth. There is simply a single designated direct corridor, much less these sidewalks. There is no place for bikes to go, but we have, we are a major transportation, I mean, tourist hub. We have lots of hotels that cater to the tourists. We have a university here that caters to athletes and people who love outdoor things. We try to bring in tourism money in the summer, and then, and not just in the winter, because that's what maintains things. And so if we can't maintain safe roads, if the state cannot help us maintain state roads, then maybe the state shouldn't own these roads. I think the state has an obligation to maintain safety on roads that they claim are state roads, and if you don't, then free them up so that the local communities can do what we need to do in order to maintain the safety on these roads. So, thank you.
Thank you Lisa. Bill Watson, do we have any folks online who would like to speak?
Yeah, hi councillor, we have had a few people online tonight. There's been a couple of comments about support for a gas tax increase. There's been a couple of other comments as well, but no one wants to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you Bill. Is there anyone who has not spoken yet? Representative Stringham. And then after that, you can have your turn.
There's a card for you.
Oh, thank you. Then we did.
So thanks, I'm Jerry Stringham, I'm the representative from Lincoln. Just a couple of things to add, I know I testified in other committees, and thanks for responding to the questions I had. I'm, I was a member of Ways and Means for one term and Finance for two terms, nearly my three terms, so in one case dealing with revenue forecasts and another case spending. So I kind of, I have a comment about keeping the revenue estimates flat as, in terms of the money coming from the federal government. Obviously, we don't know what's gonna happen, what's gonna come from them, whether there's gonna be a move to have block grants, in which case we gotta compete for money with other parts of the state. But I think as a base, I think it would be more reasonable, especially after the first two years, to maybe build in the rate of inflation as the revenue increase, rather than just keeping it zero. And I know that's just an assumption that may or may not happen, but I think that's kind of a little more realistic, given what's going on, and where I think things might end up in the next 10 years. So obviously, if it's different, either more or less, we'll make adjustments, but I think that's a better base assumption, and maybe a, you know, useful project like Smith Bridge will go from being just under the line to just over the line with that assumption like that. The other thing I wanted to ask you to consider in the 10-year plan, since the last time I spoken with you, I went to the grand opening of the Lincoln Police Department. That is located, unlike the current police station, which is far away from 93, it's right on 93, pretty much at mile marker 101.2. So the way for people to get, for the police to respond to a call, if it's, say, on I-93 North, is to go back through the center of town and back out. If there's a way to at least allow them with access for an entrance only on the northbound side, if there's any emergency on the northbound side of 93, it'll probably save them about five minutes, and, you know, avoid the problem of going through a heavily trafficked area with lights blaring and so on to get there. That may be enough to, you know, save a fatality or a major injury. So, and I don't know whether that's something that would need to go into the 10-year plan or not, and whether it's just the access, and then the town could, with your approval, pay for the project itself. But I would like to insert that as a comment into this plan, how to be put in, and if there's any feedback that can help with that, that you need more on, I appreciate it if you'd let me know between now and then. Thank you.
Absolutely. We are in discussions with the town on that, I've been playing phone tag with the deputy police chief there. We do have to get federal highways permission to allow something like that, but we're very willing to work with the town on that and investigate the best place for that access, and then getting federal highway permission.
Yeah. You can see, it's about, what, 50 yards.
Right there. It's right, right there. Absolutely. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, you're next, and is there anyone else who has not spoken yet who would like to speak? All right, well then.
My name is William Kendall, I'm a town resident, 27 years in volunteer fire department, so that Smith Bridge Road is, has an accident waiting to happen. My concern is, who brought this project to the forefront? Was it the state, or was it the town? Because whoever it was, if they're really into this project, they can't drop it simply because they gotta know on a roundabout. A traffic light will back up traffic to 93, it'll back up traffic down by, down by the other rotary, there's no, I don't think there's a question about that. A traffic light is better than nothing. It wouldn't have to run 24 hours, it could be yellow in all directions from midnight to 6:00 AM, or 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, something like that. But I just hope this doesn't die completely because of an initial no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you everyone for coming. Obviously, this is a really difficult fiscal environment, as someone said earlier, and we've heard loud and clear, a lot of testimony tonight about the Smith Bridge Road project. We've also heard about the bridge over the Baker River, and we've also heard about the sidewalk project. So, and I know we've also heard about other projects as well. So thank you very much, everyone, for sharing your feedback. The public record will remain open until November 6th, so if you would like to invite others, or if you would like to submit additional testimony in writing, your testimony tonight has been recorded for the record. It will all be compiled into a report that goes to all of the executive councillors, who will then, we're gonna have a meeting in November to hash it all out and see what we should do, and talk about all of the feedback that we've received. So these guys are gonna put together all of the comments. I would imagine they might have some thoughts of their own based on what they've heard. They'll meet with the council, and we'll have a discussion all together. I'm, obviously, I, we have a room full of people here for a project, and that definitely stands out quite clearly. I've been hearing almost unanimous support across all of the hearings in my district in support of the, of a toll increase, and I've also heard a lot of people talk about a gas, a gas tax increase, although that's not something that the council has control over. So thank you, stay tuned for the process, and if you want to add more, that's by November 6th. I am very proud to be your executive councillor. We're really like a city council just for the entire state. So my job is to respond, whether it's to individuals who might need help finding the right department to talk to, or whether it's working with your municipality, like getting that exemption for emergency vehicles. I worked with the town manager on that with DOT. So anything that I can do, that's my job, is to be your, you know, your city councillor just for the whole state, you know, at the state level. So please let me know if I can be of assistance, and thank you for coming tonight.